Good afternoon. This committee on appropriation, public debt, legal affairs, retirement, public parks, recreation, historic preservation, and land is now called to order. Public notices for this hearing were published in the legislative website and were noticed in the media. The committee has four bills on for hearing today. The first bill, three oh four, is by Senator Judy Womack. The speaker is at a speaking local, so she's asked to have that before. I understand that, so Chair is going to call out of order the bill three twenty-four introduced by Senator Frank Uggan to add a new section eight four nine, chapter one, to article one of title one, Guam Code Annotated, relative to naming the East Agania Park to Inetnan La Hingwahan, YMLG Centennial Beach Park in honor of the Young Men's League of Guam Organization. Mr. Jimmy Teria? Oh, Dr. Taitino. I knew that they wanted you to speak, and I was looking, I go, that doesn't look like Taitino to me. All right, Doc. I understand you're on call soon.
Well, thank you for allowing us to do the first presentation. I'm speaking on behalf of the YMLG, the Young Men's League of Guam, and the Vice President, our President is presently off island. Buenas tardes. Dankeschön, it's Sidoz Massey to Senator Frank Uggan and the late Senator Ben Pangolinen and the thirty-second Guam Legislature for their support in naming the West Hagatnia Beach, Inetnan La Hingwahan, or YMLG Centennial Beach Park. The Board of Directors and the membership of the Young Men's League of Guam unanimously support this bill as this is a great way to recognize and honor our fraternal organization for the many years of dedication and effort in preserving and promoting the Chamor culture. The Young Men's League of Guam is honored and humbled by this gesture and generosity, and the Inetnan La Hingwahan, YMLG Centennial Beach Park will stand as a testament to the centuries of hardship and strength of the Chamor people and for posterity. Our people have withstood the conquests of the Spanish conquistadors, American colonialism, and the Japanese occupation during World War Two, and survived the atrocities of the war. We are truly a proud people with resilience and perseverance, and the YMLG will continue to promote pride in our young people and respect for our manamko and perpetuate the Chamor culture. Beba, the thirty-second Guam Legislature. Beba Guam, Beba YMLG.
Thank you very much, Doc. Mr. Teria or Mr. Librani, either way.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Jimmy Teria. I'm the Secretary for the Young Men's League of Guam, and we have a resolution presented here today, signed by members of the Board of Directors, and it's in support of bill three two four dash thirty-two as amended to name the West Hagatnia Beach as the Young Men's League of Guam Centennial Beach Park, and to commemorate the Inetnan La Hingwahan's one hundred years of exemplary and philanthropic services to the people of Guam. Whereas the goal of the Young Men's League of Guam is to create a sense of community in the neighborhoods where our people live and work, we hope that an increased sense of community will lead to more personal involvement and more cultural education on social activities, which will create a better community and a better place for us to live. Whereas the Inetnan La Hingwahan, or Young Men's League of Guam, is one of the island's oldest organizations founded on the premise of encouraging and fostering the preservation and prolific practice of the Chamor culture, language, and heritage. Further, the Young Men's League of Guam promotes the development of prominent leaders from within the community and the promotion of good fellowship amongst all the people of Guam. And whereas the Young Men's League of Guam predates the organization of the government of Guam and was created during the insular government of Guam administered at the direction of the President of the United States, whereas in January nineteen seventeen, President Walter Wilson authorized the formation of the Young Men's League of Guam as the first local fraternal organization. And whereas the Young Men's League of Guam, also known as the Inetnan La Hingwahan, in preparing its centennial celebration in two thousand seventeen, a hundred years of service to the people and island of Guam. Whereas in nineteen seventeen, the Young Men's League of Guam has consistently strived to preserve and promote the Chamor culture, committing itself to the advancement of children of Guam through scholarship programs for higher education, and has encouraged our children to strive for excellence. And whereas in nineteen seventeen, or since nineteen seventeen, the league has had a great and important impact in helping and extended a hand to many of our island community from disaster support to assistance in major island events. The YMLG helped many to rebuild or build lives. Now therefore be it resolved where the President of the Young Men's League of Guam, YMLG, the Board of Directors, on behalf of the membership as a whole, do hereby express the Inetnan La Hingwahan's unanimous support and sincere appreciation for the intent of bill three two four dash thirty-two as amended to name the West Hagatnia Beach Park wherein after to be known as the Young Men's League of Guam, Inetnan La Hingwahan Centennial Beach Park, a befitting honor of those YMLG members who have passed on, and a great privilege for those members who continue to be of service to our island. Signed by our President, our Vice President, our Secretary, and our Board of Director. Thank you, and Sidoz Massey.
Thank you very much.
I just have a brief comment. My name is Andrew Leguany. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Young Men's League of Guam, and I just wanted to, sort of, I read a little bit of history about the YMLG, and it was not a cakewalk to get it approved. I mean, it was met with resistance from the then-American governor and the local clergy, so it took the initiative of all these gentlemen that went before us to write a letter to the US President to get it approved, so it is with that that we totally support this bill. And I think it is somewhat fitting to name something of permanence like a park, something that's, you know, real, to name it, and in the city of Hagatnia, our capital city of Hagatnia, that is fitting that we name something after the YMLG. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I think maybe our local historian may add some more to that. Dr. Wawaka, please.
Thank you very much, Doc.
Okay. Thank you very much, Doc. Thank you very much, Doc. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Doc. 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 Thank you very much, Doc.
Well, I just have two questions. Can you clarify, are we talking about the West Hagania Park? Because you said in your testimony, west, the bill says east. So, and then when I was back there, I was asking, where's this park? And somebody pointed to that, so that would be west, right? So...
When you're facing the ocean, it's to the left of the pavilion there with the hot dogs, and that's what my guess is. So whatever that is, whatever direction, east or west, then that, that's, that's my guess is.
Well, I guess, I guess the dividing line would be, would be the Agania Stadium. Anything to the right of that would be west, I mean east, anything to the left of that would be west. And I guess we just need to maybe be more clear as to which park we're talking about, because this leads me up to my second question. In so naming then this area, this park, after the Inetnan La Hingwahan, is it reasonable to assume then that the organization will take on the responsibility of maintaining the park? Because right now, Parks and Rec is maintaining it, and so now we want to basically put, you know, the organization's name, and I'm sure the organization is going to want to see that as a shining landmark, so is it reasonable to assume that the organization is going to assume the responsibility for maintaining the park? Cutting the grass, you know, maybe short of rebuilding a pavilion or whatever?
That question was raised by the Club, and I think the idea was just for the naming of the park, but, and maybe painting of the shelters, but the cleaning, the daily or the weekly maintenance of the park would still remain with Parks and Rec.
Okay, and I think that's important to know then, because the bill does not say that. And so then maybe if the organization is not thinking that, hey, we don't want that responsibility, we just want the fame and glory, then, then we probably need to make that more clear in here than...
We might also need to clarify what might be a misconception by the Director. The Director, Mr. Bloss, submitted testimony and partipity on the two bills, and he says the YMLG is also a supporter and DPR, and are in the process of formalizing a public-private partnership for the adoption and maintenance of the East Agania Beach Park. So, we will have to clarify that, okay, at some point.
And I think in addition to that, maybe a map showing exactly where that, instead of a description of east or west, because to me that would be...
Depending if you're facing it, or whether it's from the ocean.
To me, that would be south or north, north or south. Marine Drive is north-south, I think, too.
And I think on the western side, there's actually three pavilions there, I think.
Yes.
Two or three.
I think a map would clarify that.
Okay. Okay. Then, thank you very much for your testimony. Oh, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for bringing that up, as I too read the support from Mr. Bloss from the Department of Parks and Recreation for both the support of two ninety-five and three two four. My question to the members here, if I may, was, there was a note to include if this were to pass, the mayor of Hagatnia, and I just wanted to know that in the creation of this, was the, did the mayor of Hagatnia give his support, an intention to supporting this bill or not? Was he aware that this change would be made?
That, yeah, that we don't know.
Okay. Because I do want to know for the record that I do support the intent of the bill and the logistics, but I think it's very important that usually, when a bill is introduced of this magnitude, that there comes a resolution from the Municipal Planning Council in reference to renaming of, whether it be a park or an area within the jurisdiction of that mayor's village, and then the MPC, the Municipal Planning Council, gets involved, and they send a resolution to this August body in support of. So, I know that it should be in support of, and I just don't see it here, but, and I guess we'll just ask the committee to double-check and work it while we work it into the markup.
Okay, we'll put that on the list.
Please, sign it Massey, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll consider the bill here. Sidoz Massey. As long as we're dealing with Senator Frank's bills, and we'll do a quick one on bill two forty-five thirty-two, an act to add to chapter one, title one, Guam Code Annotated, relative to naming the Tezen football field in honor of Mikel Tan IV? Two ninety-five. Where do we start with Ken? Who's, okay, go ahead. Oh, Paul, I'm sorry, Paul. Is the red light on?
Good afternoon, Senator. I would like to start this off with a very touching story about a young man named Mikel Tan IV. It started in two thousand five. Mikel and his father would drive by our football field every day and see cars along the sidelines with their headlights illuminating the field to allow the kids to practice. Then one evening, Mikel turned to his father and said, why don't we help the kids out and put some lights on the field for them? Mr. Sensio Tan C V, owner and president of Benson Guam Enterprise Inc., was so touched by his son's interest and compassion that he started a community outreach program. Improvement started immediately. For the baseball field, installed lights, installed restroom fixtures, painted and provided fencing to complete the restoration program. For the football field, installation of lights, building of the grandstand. Unfortunately, Mikel was not able to attend the completion of these projects due to his untimely passing in the same year, in two thousand five. Mr. Sensio, together with his wife Noriko, established the Mikel Tan IV Foundation in honor of their son. In two thousand eleven, the Guam Youth Raiders, um, requested for assistance to help improve our field. Mr. Sensio, together with Mr. Monito Mandragens, provided support through the Mikel Tan IV Foundation. They replaced the grandstand flooring, they renovated it and extended it with a twenty-by-forty-five pavilion with a concrete flooring, installed lights in the pavilion, repainted the grandstand. Currently is working on logistics to replace football field lights and bringing in a watered service or source. Other organizations have utilized the baseball field and football fields to include international rugby competitors from Japan, Guam National Youth Football Federation, Guam Women's Taku Football League, Miller Football League, Bois of Football League. Due to the generosity of Mr. Sensio and the Mikel Tan IV Foundation, from two thousand ten to present, a thousand-plus kids have utilized this field yearly, and over two thousand adults have competition share. This is why it is so important for the Guam Youth Raiders to approach Mr. Sensio and ask if you would move forward with officially requesting for the renaming of our field in honor of Mikel. With our MOU with DPR, Mr. Ray Bloss, Director, is very supportive, and we receive great support. Today, the foundation sponsor, the Youth Raiders, and we are also known as the Mikel Tan IV Raiders, and we will proudly wear the Mikel Tan rename on our uniforms in memory of his son. Our organization, um, requests for your support of bill number two ninety-five dash thirty-two in renaming of the field to Mikel Tan IV Football Field in memory of this young man who started this all because he wanted to help the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very touching. Anybody wish to speak? Please.
Hi, Senators. I don't have a written testimony, but I'm here to highly support this bill, the renaming of the Tezen field to Mikel Tan IV field. I've been a coach, my name is Herb Salimitas. I've been a coach, a youth football coach for numerous years already, been coaching the kids, keeping them off the streets. Also baseball, I've been with baseball also, supporting the kids, coaching the kids, and the Tan, my family has been very supportive of us, you know, I mean, numerous years already. I've seen all the improvement they've done. I've seen, you know, how they get involved with the community, so I'm very, very supportive of this bill. Thank you.
And thank you, and I want to thank both of you for all the work that you do with our young people.
Hi, Senator. I myself, my name is Dave Elliott. With everyone, with all the football organizations we have on this island, each organization handles a minimum of a hundred and fifty kids. What Mr. Herb was saying is, we help them, you know, at night, we have practice every single day, get them off the streets, keep them busy, so for all of us here volunteers, we volunteer ourselves every day, every night to teach these kids not only the game, the sport of football, but discipline, and which is going to carry on throughout their lives as they get older, we can still discipline to them at a young age, so when they, at night, you know, there's no way for them to do any selfless acts or be out there in the community, destructing our, you know, public buildings and stuff. I also am very supportive of this bill as a volunteer, as part of the board members of this Raider organization, that Mr. Tan and his family are very, very helpful with us in getting this field operational. We're at a point now where we can actually have games on this field. A couple of years ago, there's no way we can have games on this field, but we can have games now due to their support of their foundation. Please.
Hey, how you doing, Senator? My name is Ken Leguany. I'm the person that the Board tasked to go and put this together, so I was here to answer just in case you had any questions for us, I was here to answer that. Just to kind of cap that off, I'm in support of the bill. The thing is, what he was trying to say is that that field was deemed unplayable and unsafe for a long time. We didn't mention a lot, like about a hundred loads of dirt that was donated, a lot of the backhoes and the, a lot of the people that helped put this together, and Sensio was very instrumental behind this. Since we talked to him, I mean, he didn't have it overnight, happened every year. Every year we had projects, things to make that field playable and safe, taking care of the kids and supporting us, and in turn, it not only took care of the kids, which was his intention at first, it took care of the community, because we went from the soccer, the National Guard using it now. And ever since it was completed and done, I'm not sure if you remember that sign on the side of the road, their field restoration project, and you, Senator, when I was bugging you when you were in charge in the oversight at the time, of support of trying to get that field playable, it took three seasons, we did not play on that field, we could not have games on that field for three years. It took Sensio's inspiration, support, assistance, us going out there to get this field playable, and the support of the community as well. It's a good thing, because now that it's completed and it's done and we're improving on it, everyone's utilizing the field, and it, like we have in the statement there, it's been beneficial to everybody, the Miller Football League, the Bud League, the Japan team that came over for the women's, they challenged them, they had the games at the field, the rugby team, the soccer, the National Guard uses it. Now, it's a field that everybody's able to use and utilize. We do currently take care of the maintenance, by the way. Under our MOU, we handle the maintenance of the field, we're responsible, we keep the cleanliness, we cut the grass, all that stuff, we handle all that, not DPR. So we have relieved them from that responsibility under the MOU, and continue to keep that responsibility of the maintenance of the field. So, that's pretty much what I want to say. Again, thank you.
Again to the both of you, and to all the coaches that are out there, thank you for all the work that you do with the young people. And, yes, I know Sensio, and he's doing all the signs throughout the island, the village entry. So, we have some other people, I'm not sure if they want to speak. Okay, oh, this man.
Hi, I'm sorry, your first name, Paul? You indicated in your testimony that the Tan Foundation also made improvements to the baseball, the two baseball fields.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just curious, why are we limiting it to the football field if they are, if they are basically providing improvements to the three fields?
Yeah, you want to answer that? We did approach the mayor's office, because the mayor has an MOU with the baseball field. At the time, he did the improvement, he never looked for recognition anyway. It was done already in the past, but we can account for the football field, because we have a MOU with DPR, and the mayor was invited with the baseball field as well when we introduced this bill. However, the mayor never, never attended that meeting about the naming of the baseball field, so that's a separate entity, because the MOU is direct with DPR and the mayor, and the football field is completely under DPR's control. So our MOU reflects with DPR, and that's the reason why we introduced it as the football field.
You heard in the previous bill, the question was asked about whether the Baragada Municipal Planning Council ever gave a resolution saying, yeah, we have no problem naming this field after, so does the organization have any kind of a concurrence, I guess, written concurrence from the Municipal Planning Council?
The response I got from DPR on that, sir, was that mayor, that all of Tezen is in there, is under DPR, not all of them, but the area, that we're speaking of is the football field, so I can only account for the football field. And the football field is completely under DPR, and not the mayor's council or the mayor of Baragada. The baseball field, like I said, I can't count for that either, but the baseball field MOU was agreed to between DPR and the mayor of Baragada, so I would assume that it was still, it was under DPR's control at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for all your work. Cindy, Warren, Uggan, Eileen Guerrero, Vincent Guerrero, if anybody wants to speak, you can come up, if not, we'll just take it as in support. Okay? Or you wanted, okay, okay, great. Thank you. I noticed a lot of people here from GPA, so I note that must be Senator Tom's bill. So, Bill... three fifty-six, an act to amend section eighty-two forty-three, chapter eight. Guam co-danitated to provide Guam power authority, flexibility in fulfilling the mandates of public law thirty-two one forty.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, Mr. Chairman. The, um, bill three five six dash three two, uh, really is, is more of a technical change. Um, whereas in section two, it adds the phrase, uh, section two, page two, line, line nine, it adds this, the phrase from time to time, uh, which, which then will provide GPA the flexibility to be go up, to go out to the bond market, uh, for as many times as it needs to, to, um, to secure the bonds that it needs. And, um, also to clarify, uh, language, um, in section, oh, in section two also, it's in, uh, listed on page six there. Uh, just to clarify that the, um, that, and, and what it does is it, uh, deletes the phrase not less than five million dollars, uh, with regards to setting, setting aside, uh, a sum of money, uh, to support a revolving fund. Um, and to change the not less than to a figure of, uh, up to, uh, which basically then, uh, places a ceiling on how much, uh, will be set aside by GPA, uh, for this revolving fund.
Thank you very much. Uh, signed up to speak are Chairman of, uh, CCU, Simon Sanchez, for the GPA, John Beneventi, and Graham Botha, and from PUC, Fred Horeki. Come on. You can decide on your order.
Uh, Buenos, good afternoon Senators and thank you for conducting the hearing on, uh, bill three fifty-six. We're, we're really here, uh, in more of a supportive role to the Guam PUC. Um, as we work together on trying to get this borrowing that had been approved by the governor of the legislature, um, recently. Um, it's an unfortunate set of circumstances, uh, led to a situation in which, if you recall, the bulk of the borrowing, uh, something like around eighty-nine million is for capital improvement projects. Uh, but then, uh, we wanted to try to create a demand-side management program, which also would be, uh, funded by a borrowing. Um, and, and that's the law that was passed. Yeah, but as we worked through the law, the PUC had some concerns about, uh, a couple of issues that, that we would defer to them and let them speak to. Um, and that's, as you said Senator, some of them are, uh, would require some technical amendments to, I believe, give the flexibility to the PUC, uh, for them to, to, you know, pass the judgment on, on the borrowing, not only for the, uh, the capital improvement projects that are contemplated by the bond, but by any demand-side management program. Unfortunately, our author, uh, Speaker Ben, um, passed before he could create the law that he had envisioned, uh, that would be funded by, uh, the demand-side management program that would be funded by this five million dollars. And that uncertainty unfortunately creates a problem, as you can see from the legal testimony from bond counsel, uh, and the concerns expressed by the PUC, that you could, you could interpret the note, uh, the, the current law in a way that it might prevent, uh, the PUC from taking actions as they may want to do. It also might prevent the borrowing from occurring for the large capital improvement projects that we need. They may get held up because of the technical, uh, wording in the current law, having to do with the demand-side management program. Um, without getting overly technical, with capital improvement projects, you can have, um, tax-exempt financing, which is the traditional financing that we do almost all the time. But when you get to something like demand-side management program, particularly one that's not specified, because you cannot specify and guarantee to the IRS that the use of the proceeds would be for capital improvements. Because in this case, it'd be for demand-side management. Is it demand-side management that helps a rate payer? Does it help GPA? You know, we're, we're not sure what that program will be. So when we borrow the money, we cannot tell the investor and the lawyers cannot sign off that all the proceeds would be going to, uh, capital improvements, which would qualify us for the tax, the full tax exemption. So that's where this idea of, you know, senior lien debt, kind of the first mortgage is capital improvement debt. Subordinate lien, like when we borrow from Bank of Guam, uh, for some of these short-term loans, um, uh, is treated differently. Uh, uh, usually receives a higher interest rate than full tax-exempt, uh, financing. Uh, and that's created just s- some concerns that we're hoping you could assist us, uh, primarily in, in giving the flexibility, uh, that I believe the PUC is seeking, uh, to carry out their mandates in a way. And to give clarity to GPA, the PUC, and eventually the lending community as to what we are borrowing for tax-exempt and what we are not borrowing for tax-exempt, or we might borrow for a different use and a different type of debt, in this case subordinate debt, which, uh, has higher interest rates. And having higher interest rates has raised some concerns as well. You know, it, it makes the cost of the demand-side management program, uh, more, more expensive when, when obviously our goal collectively had was to try to get those costs as low as possible. So, I think with that background, I, I, you know, Mr. Beneventi has prepared some short testimony. Graham is with us as well. He's been involved with the bond council for the current borrowing. Uh, we were in New York, well, two of us are in New York now, uh, some of us are presenting from here. But we're meeting the rating agencies now and they're asking that question, you know, what exactly is going on with this subordinate debt? And how it might look. And hopefully with, with your help in this bill, um, and a unified position by the both GPA and I believe the PUC, uh, supporting this, this flexibility that gets created by this language. Um, it, it, it gives us the opportunity to still carry out the intent down the road, but not to hold up the current borrowing until we can create the legislation or whatever the demand-side policy, uh, might be. Uh, and then having said that, the PUC has asked GPA to come up with a demand-side management program. We now are in a position to work with the PUC and their consultants to design something. I know Senator Ada is looking also at demand-side management programs. Uh, we, we, we're looking at a particular model in Hawaii in which the legislature, uh, granted the power to the Hawaii PUC to set up the demand-side management program. So it delegated that authority, uh, to the PUC because it, you know, they're in a good position to, to do these kinds of programs. Uh, we don't have that clarity yet as to what the demand-side management program might be and how this money might be spent on it. And because of those uncertainties, uh, it's holding up the other borrowing. Uh, and so, we, we hope that the body would give consideration to passing this bill to give the PUC the flexibility it seeks to, um, uh, and, and we're really to support that effort of the PUC because we really can't get anywhere unless their concerns are addressed. So unless Graham or John wanted, wanted to add to any of that, I, I think the main player center stage is the PUC on this bill.
Thank you very much and, uh, talk about demand-side. I guess it was in yesterday's news that, uh, there's a rebellion in a couple of states that their kilowatt hour went up to fourteen cents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Ada. Fred Horeki appearing as legal counsel for the PUC. And I'm actually testifying on behalf of the chairman, who just arrived very early this morning on a flight from off-island. I think Chairman Sanchez of the CCU has really stated a lot of the reasons that we, we also support this bill. We're, we're fully intent of, uh, bill three fifty-six. We support its adoption. Um, as the legislative findings noted here, the, the bond bill that the legislature passed, public law thirty-two one forty, mentioned a demand-side management program in renewables, but didn't really state the, the nature of the program, what specific programs would be involved. And of course, the law places upon the PUC the duty to review and approve the terms and conditions of the borrowing. So the PUC consultants felt that it was, it was a difficult position for the PUC to be in, to approve bond financing without knowing exactly what the specific programs would be. And in addition, I think the legislature probably at the time it passed the law wasn't aware that the demand-side management programs would have to be funded by subordinate bonds. Now, as you know, the, the role of the PUC is to protect ratepayer interests, to make sure that there are no unnecessary costs. The problem with a subordinate bond, as Chairman Sanchez has indicated, is that it's taxable and it's at quite a higher rate. Our consultants looked at a subordinate bond of five million. And it turns out that the, uh, actual cost would be twenty-eight percent higher to the ratepayers. So I believe that the PUC, through its consultants, already has had great concerns about a subordinate bond for only five million. That's also from our understanding, not customary in the bond market, that a municipality or state would, go out to the market for, for that small of a bond issuance. So, the PUC's concerns mostly with a subordinate bond are, are from the impact on the ratepayers and the fact that the ratepayers would have to pay back at a very high rate. In addition, since we have no fixed program for the renewables or DSM at present, um, the financing would occur, but we don't know about the timing of the DSM program. So, the ratepayers then could be paying back principal and interest long before the actual DSM programs would go into effect. And by the way, the programs likely would not go into effect all at once. It, it will probably be staggered over time. But the whole uncertainty of not having a specific program at this point, um, was, was a problem. Normally, the PUC, when it looks at a bond issuance, in terms of the overall bond, it, it does look initially at the programs, exactly what's being funded. Now, that's more of a due diligence review to make sure that GPA has a justification for the program. It's something that's needed. Later on however, we do a second stage, which is the contract review. And that's more detailed. That's when the PUC would actually, with this bond issue, uh, this will happen here. Even though the bond issue is approved, GPA still has to come back to the PUC for approval of each of the specific projects. Well, again, since we don't have projects for the subordinate, uh, bond issue, very difficult for us to perform our, our normal functions in that regard. Uh, I do want to assure the legislature though, that the PUC is very supportive of DSM and renewables. And just coincidentally, it happens that, um, I think about six months ago, seven months ago, the PUC on its own initiative instructed its consultants to come up with a proposal for DSM and renewables. Uh, it had been the feeling of the chairman and some of the commissioners that perhaps more needed to be done by GPA to support a DSM program. Our consultants were instructed to come up with a study outlining types of programs that might be available, such as LED lighting, uh, maybe even solar panels. They've done hot water, uh, solar heaters before. Our consultants have looked at that and in early July, came out with the report. As a result of that report, tonight, the PUC is entertaining an order that would establish a collaborative effort between the PUC and GPA to determine specific renewable programs that might, uh, bear promise. There will be a number of, uh, conferences between the two entities with the hope of, of implementing a DSM program. So, we, we agree with the legislature certainly. That, that's very important. And we, we need to look at ways to encourage customers to reduce their energy consumption and thereby, uh, cut the usage on fuel oil. So, in concluding, we're, we're very much in support of this legislation. We do think it'll assist GPA in going out and issuing the bonds that it needs. And, uh, probably needs, I'm sure in their opinion, to be done very, very timely, very soon if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horeki. Um, either one, if you want to add anything. If not, uh, we'll just consider it heard. I wait, I only ask a question.
Um, just, just so that it's, it's clear for the record, on page two, uh, line nine, uh, the amendment that's being made there is the insertion of the phrase from time to time. Um, now, if, my understanding is that, that insertion of that phrase would allow GPA to go out there and to the bond market to secure the first eighty-nine million dollars. And then, at another time, when the demand-side management program is ready, uh, to go back out later for, um, uh, a second borrowing of five million dollars. Is that, is that correct interpretation?
I, I think that's correct, but one thing the PUC does want to look at on the financing, I think our consultants felt that the most expensive is a subordinate bond. Of course, we never like to have rate increases or include other things in rates. Rate funding is another possible approach, but there's also a surcharge. Again, customers don't like surcharges, but it may well be that financing some are part of the program through a customer surcharge might end up being cheaper for the ratepayers over time because they don't pay the same principal and interest that they would pay on the bond issue. So, uh, you, I think you're correct Senator on your interpretation of the legislation. I think though also that the PUC probably feels that it, it should also consider other possible forms of financing that may result in a lesser impact to ratepayers.
Uh, the second question that I have, of course, is on the last page, on page six, line two, where we are, um, deleting the phrase not less than five million dollars, uh, which is that basically establishes a floor. And deleting that to, uh, instead for the phrase up to, which establishes a ceiling. But I think, um, concerns have been expressed that then with that, one could interpret that, that GPA goes out to borrow one dollar. Or up to five million dollars. So, 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 you know, it says you can borrow, a, a GPA is going to go and borrow up to five million dollars, but it does, there's no language that, that ensures that it's going to be a minimum of four million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, up to five million dollars. So, um, I'm going to ask that maybe PUC can work with me or, or with the, with the chair, with the committee, uh, in terms of the language that will take away that concern, uh, such that, you know, I mean, I, I, I think the integrity of, of, uh, the organizations is such that I, I don't foresee that you're going to end up borrowing just one dollar, but the language certainly allows for that.
Yeah, and I think if you read, uh, even if you read Bond Counsel's letter, Mr. Wang from OREC, it's not as clear as we, we would like to make it, made it. Recognizing that the PUC's independent, can independently approve or disapprove projects or bond financing, um, uh, my sense of the reason that phrase up to has to be put in is it's quite conceivable that PUC could say, I only, I only want to give you a million for, for, you know, maybe in the design of a new demand-side management program. It comes up where some of it will be funded by a surcharge, some might be funded by a borrowing, which would be subordinate in nature and already authorized. But because we're not sure what it would be, the, the Bond Counsel's letter, and Graham can help me with this, if I'm, if I'm not saying it quite right, but the Bond Counsel's letter is saying, when you use the phrase not less than, uh, and yet you don't know what it's going to use the money for, you would effectively sort of put a hold on the remaining eighty-nine million dollars. Because it's, we just don't know, one, we don't know what the PUC is going to do. And, and I think part of our concern and supporting the PUC in seeking this language clarity is we don't want to compromise their independence. If they want to do a demand-side management program and they want to fund it differently than borrowing, this doesn't, this, this, this language doesn't prevent them from doing that. That's where, that's where the time to time comes from. You know, well, they're going to issue an order for us to work with them. A year from now, we come up and say, we have a program and we need X million. Well, this law, uh, as amended, by using that phrase time to time, does exactly what you just said. A year from now, we, we could, if we felt that this was in the best interest of the ratepayer, go borrow subordinate debt up to five million dollars, uh, to do this. But, uh, Bond Counsel's made it very clear that, that they, they believe that the phrase not less than five million dollars can be interpreted in a, in a way that until we resolve this, we can't even borrow the eighty-nine million. we can't even borrow the eighty-nine million dollars because we, we don't know what that number's gonna be and what its nature's gonna be. So that's the primary takeaway from the ORC letter, uh, is they felt you needed to correct those two phrases. The time-to-to- from time-to-time gives the PUC the ultimate flexibility as to what their decision might be and when they want to apply their decision. And changing the phrase "up, uh, not less than" to "up to" frees up the other eighty-nine million and makes it clear that it's eighty-nine million. Can't be more than that because you, you gotta preserve at least, uh, up to five million here, but it doesn't hamstring that eighty-nine million from going to the market. And so that's, that's my understanding of Bond Counsel's request to have that phrase "up to five million dollars." Is that generally accurate, Graham?
Yes, and Senator, I also note that, uh-
Do you speak into the mic and identify yourself?
Yes, Senator, sorry. Um, and I'd also note that if you look at pages three, four, and five, uh, the "up to" language is so that it's consistent with the rest of it where it says in paragraph D, the line twenty-five, "The remaining proceeds of the bond should be used solely for the following purposes." And then it says paragraph one, "up to fifty-six million." Uh, paragraph two, "up to five million." And so that's the, that language that was in the, on the last page, page six, is consistent with the rest of it. "Up to" means anything within that category GPA can, can borrow and use up to that, uh, amount, up to that category. And I would note, um, that in the past, the PUC has in its exercise of its diligence said, "Okay, um, you have up to ten million for this, but this one particular project, we don't believe is cost-effective." And so they have struck that project. And so then we can go back and reallocate it to other things within that particular category. So the "up to" gives a flexibility for the PUC and, and GPA. And so that language on page six, "up to," um, five million dollars is, is consistent with the rest of the statutory bond language.
But, but, I kinda s-
But of course, it does, you're correct. It does not, it does not say, I mean, it's, it's a, it does not say that we have to spend up, it doesn't say, doesn't give a minimum amount that we must spend on that.
Right. And that, that's, that's, that's a, a concern that has been raised. And I think, you know, it's gonna need to be addressed in the bill to allay that concern.
Senator, I, I think if we send you our DSM report, perhaps some of your concerns will be allayed. I mean, the, the commission has come out very strongly in favor of a good DSM program for GPA and probably no- nothing, not just a pilot or some, you know, inconsequential program. It, it, from the report, it's a detailed program. So the PUC is gonna begin a series of conferences on that with GPA. But, um, any input that the legislature would have, if the legislature would want to be involved in, in those discussions, that, that would be, uh, certainly fine with us if, uh, that would help. But I can, I think I'm trying to assure you that there was a commitment-
No, you don't need to assure, you don't need to assure me. I mean, I, I ha- I do not question the integrity of the PUC, uh, or the CCU that, that you will, you know, come up with the best demand-side management program. But there's, there's, there's also, you know, other, uh, concern. There's other stakeholders who are concerned that maybe, uh, we're not gonna give it the full five million dollar effort and just maybe go halfway and then take the, take whatever other capacity you've got into another project. So that's, that's all I'm saying. Those other stakeholders have raised that concern. That concern's gotta be, uh, addressed and allayed. Otherwise, it just makes it for a little bumpy, uh, discussion on the session floor. Okay.
Would it help if it was explicit as to what the projects were going to be?
That's the challenge with the DSM program is it's difficult to be explicit right now. But no, we haven't seen, no, there is no demand-side management program. There's an authorization to borrow for a program that hasn't been created yet. And for all the reasons, uh, Mr. Horeki identified, it creates problems. We're gonna borrow this money, we start accruing interest, it's gonna be more expensive interest. It has to be subordinate debt because we can't tell the IRS or investors that the money's going for capital improvements. It's going for some un- yet unspecified DSM program. So that, that's, you know, and we were all working on it on the floor, we just didn't think that all the way through. We knew it would be subordinate debt, but we didn't think it would, it would raise all these other issues that Bond Counsel has raised. That one, it could be interpreted that until you resolve that, you can't even do the eighty-nine million.
So until we adopt the PUC's DSM program?
Right, and-
Proposal?
Right.
We would not know what it is that we're gonna be doing. That, that would be more explicit and would allay the, uh-
It, it might. It, well, it still depends on what the DSM program ends up being. If we're gonna give money to Tanmaria to go buy solar panels or to buy a new aircon, because it's not a capital improvement project of the utility, that arguably would not be tax exempt, it would be taxable. So we could still loan the money to Tanmaria, but instead of a four-and-a-half percent interest rate, it might be a six, seven percent interest rate, uh, which, uh, might take, you know, I agree with, with the PUC's consultant. That just reduces the amount of money you can loan to people because you've, the interest rate, you know, takes away some of their purchasing power because it's the cost of the borrowing. So, uh, I think the whole attitude would be, protect the intention of the bill until something can emerge. And then either it's subordinate debt or it's not or it's some vari- variation, but we can, we can cross that bridge then. But with the changes here, we don't preclude that from happening, but we don't freeze the, the authorization that we've already been granted by the body and the governor on the, on the things that clearly are identifiable, CIP up to eighty-nine million.
And I don't know which one of you mentioned twenty-eight percent.
I did.
Okay. Twenty-eight percent of what, I mean?
Okay, well, the, the-
He mentioned four percent or seven percent and-
Yeah, the borrowing-
What is, what, what is that? I, I'm, I need a little more than percentage points. I need some numbers.
Right, right. Let me give you some numbers. So five million borrowing, I think the payback being around six point five million, something like that. That's probably roughly, and I haven't figured out if that's twenty-eight percent, but I, I think. The, the, that was the payback, the net, uh, payback that the ratepayers would have for a five million dollar borrowing. And remember, with, with this borrowing, there's capitalized interest, there's issuance costs, very expensive money. So the consultant was concerned that maybe there's a, a better way to finance it. Now, again, we don't always like surcharges, but it might be, long-term, that would work better for the ratepayer. The ratepayer would end up not paying six point five million, but more like five million over time. You know, the, the surcharges, uh, we, we've had, of course, various surcharges on the ratepayers' bill, and those are usually, uh, based on a specific period of time. For filling the working capital fund, for example, it might be a four-year period. Something like that might work. Or it, it might turn out that even a regular bank loan might be cheaper. And I think the concern was to look at how to finance this a little better, but the subordinate bond is ac- absolutely the worst. And the commission, although approving one in the two thousand and ten, uh, bond financing in general, it feels that subordinate bonds should, to the extent possible, be avoided and that they, they often work against the ratepayers' interest in terms of cost.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator. I see Mr. Kamacho itching to, to speak. Let's go move on to Bill three forty-four, enact Act, section one-one-one-four and one-one-one-five to chapter one of Title XI, and a new item E to chapter twenty-one, division two, Title V, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Requiring the Department of Revenue and Taxation to Publish Unclaimed Income Tax Refund Checks and to Establish Income Tax Refund Assistance Hotline, also known as Taxpayer Assistance Claim Support Act of two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Kamacho.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Senator Tamara. Half a day, thank you for this opportunity to comment on Bill three four four dash thirty-two, the Taxpayer Assistance Claim Support Act of two thousand and four. This act proposes that the Department of Revenue, Department of Revenue Taxation create and establish guidelines for reporting and publishing unclaimed refund checks in a newspaper and our website, establish an income tax assistance automatic telephone hotline, and establish security measures for the Protection of Taxpayers Privacy Act. With this, under the First Mandate Act, the publication of unclaimed tax refunds to DRT, to the administration, has been published by the Governor's Newsletter, PROA, back in, uh, April twenty-second of two thousand and thirteen. We have two concerns. The first basically is that, uh, if this bill were to pass, we won't meet the deadline for the, uh, the six-month rule. And secondly, uh, the, the adequate, basically, for, for the GSA might be a problem. Taking the list for unclaimed checks for the Department of Revenue Administration in a timely manner, procedurally, it would be more efficient for DOA to publish the list as they are the custodial of all unclaimed tax, tax refund checks. In the matter of implementation of the hotline, the IRS currently provides a similar service called Where's My Refund? In where taxpayers can inquire as to the status of their refund, DRT can follow set program, but may need to adjust the program for our purposes. Realistically, this mandate may take longer than a year to properly research, create, the budget, and for the hardware, software, and personnel necessary to implement and maintain the program. If legislature proceeds with this legislation, a study by DRT and the Office of Technology should be immediately conducted to determine the costs associated and a timeline for the implementation in addition with this appropriation to follow. The funding source may be ACTC, which is additional child tax credit reimbursement that we get that are not program-ready. Also, DRT already maintains high standards with regards to taxpayer privacy and confidentiality for the Guam territorial income tax under section sixty-one oh-three and undergo safeguard reviews with IRS every three years. So basically, we, we, we do support this with, with certain, um, adjustments, if possible. In, in other words, um, we don't maintain the unclaimed, uh, refund checks, uh, DOA does. And, uh, with that, we, we probably recommend that it'd be better off if DOA does the publication and, and, uh, and, and move forward. As far as the hotline, uh, we, we, we do support it in full. We just, we just need the funding. And, and we did some research on the, the, uh, what we call Where's My Refund? And, uh, under the IRS, uh, it, it, it's a program that where taxpayers can actually go in and, and check their status, where they're at, where the refund. Although we do that now, but we're, we're very minimal right now. Right, on our website, we do, we have, we do have information of what refunds have gone out. Like, for example, if you go to our website, basically, we should be updated to all taxpayers that are, that filed error-free all the way up to February eighteenth are paid, uh, this year. So in other words, uh, if we're gonna go that route, uh, it, it's gonna take time to try and, and then do something. You know, software programs have to be developed and, and funding is another resource. So with that, I, I just wanna, uh, lay it and, and say that we do support it, but, uh, with, with, with some adjustments.
Thank you for your testimony and, uh, if it takes as long as a POS system, summer intern's going to be Director of Revenue and Taxation in twenty years before we are able to implement this. And just, just the, um, issue of Where's My Refund? How does taxpayer identify themselves on that website?
Well, basically, uh, what you normally need is your social security number, filing status, and the exact amount of, uh, refund. That's, that's their, the criteria. So we're gonna try and basically do something that what, what IRS is doing. It, it's gonna take some money to create this program.
That's a lot m- more information than February eighteenth.
Uh, well, it's, 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 uh, basically, uh, uh, we're, we're paying within the, uh, the six months.
No, I, I understand that, John. What I'm saying is for someone to be able to get on, punch in their, their, their social security number and their data filing to find out where it is currently, um, that's a lot more than just the press release that says that we're gonna be issuing checks for those error-free-
A- and that's why we support-
Tax refunds that we're on.
And that's why we support the bill. I mean, it, this is something that we can, um, uh, create as a hotline, and, um, it's just a matter of, uh, programming, funding, and, um, you know, uh, basically, uh, uh, working with, with our vendors to see if we can establish this, um, uh, hotline program or what they call Where's My Tax Refund? Which, which is similar to what, what basically this law is, is, is asking, and if I may, it's basically asking us to create a, um, a hotline that would, um, give information to the taxpayers of their status, where they're at, um, information relative to the refunds or refunds all to them, including the tax here. And also, the last one is asking for whether they have an A status or not.
I realize that, and I'm just saying, this is not something that has never been done before. I mean, we can check with the airlines and we can punch in our mileage plus or our, whatever, and we can find out all kinds of information. And for millions of us traveling annually, but trying to find sixty-six thousand is tax refunds locally. The, the program is not something that is going to be created out of whole cloth. It's already been done in many places.
That, that is true. We, 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 we basically need, uh, the resources, the funding. And I guess basically what we're saying is, is we need to basically identify the resources, where, where we're gonna get these resources to, to basically, uh, fund this program.
All right, thank you. We consider the bill as having been heard. Thank you. We only have one more bill on the agenda, and unfortunately, the speaker's not here, so I'll read her statement. This is Bill three oh-four, enact to amend section two D and two G of Public Law thirty-one two twenty-nine relative to school facilities located in Tezen. The sponsor's report, um, statement is, "I introduce Bill three oh-four, enact to amend section two D and two G of Public Law thirty-one two twenty-six relative to school Tezen facilities located in Tezen." The intent of this bill is to clarify that the funding sources identified in Public Law thirty-two one twenty and thirty-two one twenty-one should be the only funding sources for the modernization of Simon Sanchez School and the rest of the island's schools and for a comprehensive master plan which will guide this modernization. When Public Law thirty-one dash two twenty-nine was enacted, it created funding sources to address the needs of our schools. However, with Public Law thirty-two one twenty and thirty-two one twenty-one, we have dedicated new funding sources to our schools that will not pull from our revenue streams as permitted by Public Law thirty-one two twenty-nine,